Matt Teedrick's here. How did you get me?
Okay, I'm here. Let's go ahead. Let's get started on our work session this evening. The first one we are discussing is the option.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, you have to come out of the executive session.
Oh, that's.
Just got added.
You're right. I hear most of you come out directly.
Sure. I move that the mayor and town council certify that to the best of each member's knowledge is recognized by each mayor and council members affirmative vote that only such public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting by the mayor and council, and that the vote of each individual member of mayor and council be taken by roll call and recorded and included in the minutes of the meeting of town council.
Your second. Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Tewol. Vice Mayor Seelock. Councilman Cockrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie.
Yes.
Councilman Holloway.
Yes.
Councilman Mizum.
Yes.
Councilman Thompson.
Yes.
Don't you care? This time we'll go into our work session this evening. We have one item tonight, option for local economic recovery for individuals and businesses. We'll turn it over to you, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at the last work session, council wanted to ensure or wanted directed staff to come up with some various options as it relates to economic recovery for businesses and possibly individuals. So what we've had before you tonight is a proposed plan in the event council decides to move forward with this kind of initiative. What we did, Mr. Mayor and members of council, is we broke the businesses into four tiers, as you can see on the screen. Let me try to blow it up so you can see it better. Okay, can you see that better now? On the left-hand side, we have tiers from fifteen eighty to fifty thousand, fifty thousand to two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, and greater than five hundred thousand in gross receipts or gross revenues. That equates to approximately five hundred and sixty-eight businesses that have business licenses within the town limits. Sorry? Okay. Percentage of businesses in the tiers, there's approximately twenty-five percent of the businesses are in the fifteen thousand to fifty thousand range, seventeen percent in the second range, eleven percent and twenty-three percent. What we would be proposing is to take approximately a thousand dollars for a grant initiative for the bottom tier, up to thirteen thousand for the upper tier, and this can be laid out in another document that I'll show you in a moment. But in concept, this is what we've come up with in concept. Any questions? I know it's pretty vague, pretty broad right now. I don't know what's going off my screen.
I just noticed that.
There you go. Okay. So if we look at the businesses, again, this is a draft. The intent of the program is to provide a grant program for financial assistance to businesses demonstrating economic hardship from effects of Governor Northram's Executive Order fifty-three on March twelfth, twenty twenty, and Executive Order fifty-five on March thirty as it relates to the COVID nineteen pandemic. The funds to be used first to pay outstanding town front royal utility bills, business occupancy licensing, real estate taxes, remaining assistance to be used by the applicant. So in other words, we want to make sure that they paid any past due bills as well as any past taxes. As far as the administration goes, the town of Front Royal will enter into an agreement with a nonprofit organization. For an example, again, for an example, the Front Royal Warren County Chamber of Commerce is well-suited per Virginia Code, section fifteen point two dash nine five three. The terms of the agreement will outline the process for the nonprofit to administer a grant of up to one million dollars for Front Royal Business Economic Recovery and Assistance. The nonprofit will work in conjunction with the Town of Front Royal Finance Department and the Blue Ribbon Committee to administer the grant. As far as eligibility, this was, well, all of this was very challenging to come up with, but eligibility was probably one of the greatest challenges. What we came up with to propose, if you decide to move forward, business must have a valid Town of Front Royal Business License and been in operation prior to Executive Order fifty-three, which is on March twelfth. Business must be located within the town limits, as I previously mentioned. Business must demonstrate economic hardship as at least twenty percent reduction in gross revenues when compared to the prior year. Business in the following sectors directly impacted by Governor Northram's Executive Order fifty-three are exempt from demonstrating. So what we wanted to do, we didn't want to force those that were forced to close to have to demonstrate economic hardship. Because they're closed, we have a very good assumption that they are having some economic hardship. And here's an example of, well, not example, these are the businesses that are stipulated in Executive Order fifty-three. We would set a deadline as far as when to receive the applications. Now, the tier of support that we came up with, again, if we use the grocery seats from twenty nineteen as presented in the far-left column, the amount of assistance is in the second column, the additional assistance for having a town utility account and taxes is in the third column, and the total assistance is in the far-right column. The priority for the grant assistance priority will be given to those businesses forced temporarily closed, as we mentioned, and just repeating the businesses. Businesses having a town front royal utility account or real estate tax account will provide additional funds, as illustrated in the third column in the above chart. Additional funds will be sent from the nonprofit to the Town of Front Royal and will reference the associated business. In the event, all business accounts, utility, real estate tax, and business license tax are not in arrears, the town will apply and show as a credit balance the funds received by the nonprofit towards the business accounts. Preference, again, preference will be given to businesses that have provided a strategic plan, and I'm not suggesting a forty-page strategic plan. This is a two-page executive summary of strategic plan for conducting business once the governor eases or lifts restrictions. In other words, how they plan to perform during this period. They outline the process. They'll supply basic information. Certified income statement or impact statement, again, is not required for the businesses that are forced to close. Certified by the income statement needs to be certified by an accountant or CPA and used to provide proof of economic hardship. Those for all other businesses. Review process, the town will verify business license, utility account, real estate tax. So outstanding balances for utilities, B-poles, will be paid first. Additional assistance for having a town utility account or town real estate tax will be credited as prepayment towards utility account or taxes, and any remaining funds will be sent to the applicant. The Blue Ribbon Committee will review applications and recommend approval for assistance based upon available funds, and we predict fourteen days to review and fourteen days for funding is what we think is reasonable. And again, everything that's been discussed is open for change, which I'm sure there'll be a lot of change if you decide to move forward. I know I went through that quickly. It's nine fifteen. I didn't want to take too much of your time tonight. I emailed you this, I've emailed you this document for your consideration and review, but we've had, I've had several staff working on this. I've consulted business leaders. I've consulted an international economic development CEO. In general, they like, everyone seems to like this approach. Should the council decide to move forward, I just need some direction from council if you wish to move forward on something like this and let us formalize it or not.
My only objection here is that I don't, I would prefer that it, since it's our money and we're giving it to the businesses or whatnot, that we're the ones issuing the checks. I don't want the money going out the door to another entity and then going through a process. Some of it comes back to us. It just seems repetitive and like a lot.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, that's, it is, and you're right. We were advised that legally, the town cannot do this.
Okay.
Again, I go back to the first comment I made about this matter is towns are not designed to, governments are not designed to be a charity. They're designed to be the king. So they're designed to take money and take, or not take, to receive taxes and receive money, not necessarily pay it out in the form of a gift to the people. So that's why it needed to be a nonprofit, and the state code specifically said a chamber of commerce, and that's why they would be administering the grant. The other alternative, and I'll just throw it out for most localities that are, I won't say most, I'll probably go as far as to say all localities that are doing some kind of program like this, if they're abiding by the law, and that's a qualifier, so if they're doing it by the law, by the books, they're using their economic development authorities to do this. And we have the ability to, we have one, but we haven't formed it yet. Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Teedrick, a couple of things. One is, so back in our own minutes of our work session on April night, when this was really kind of first brought up, in our own minutes that we approved tonight, it said that, you know, Mr. Seelock had actually mentioned that he had spoken with town staff to find out what the town could do for the citizens, and he learned that the town can't give anything away. And at that time, Mr. Napier added that there is a provision in the Virginia State Constitution which states that local and state governments cannot give gifts or grants, which is what I'm assuming you were mentioning earlier. So when I see the words grant assistance, I, you know, I just want to clarify, you know, so we can't give grants.
Right, we can donate to the nonprofit organization, and then the nonprofit organization can make the dispersment. Is kind of the way we, the town itself cannot issue the grant, is my understanding.
Okay. Well, I just want to start off by saying that I, myself, would like to see us, I applaud all the information that you've gathered and the effort that you've put into this. I myself would like to see us just kind of slow down a little bit. I'd like to see what's going to happen from the federal government, from the state government, and see what types of relief they're going to provide to businesses. I know that Mr. Teedrick just mentioned something about the EDA, and I know that, I believe I read in the minutes, that they were even adding some type of committee or board that was going to have like small business loans. And Mr. Teedrick or Mr. Wilson, do you guys recall reading that in the minutes from Friday's meeting?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Their committees going loans, whereas this would be a forgivable grant.
Correct.
That's been standard practice with the EDA, to have small business loans throughout the years of existence.
Well, I've.
What you read today is just standard practice for them.
Okay, okay. I guess what I'm saying is I'd like to see what's available out there before we move forward with a million dollars. I've had some citizens that have spoken with me, and they have concerns that we, that our town has a lot of, you know, there's a lot of unknowns right now as to our own budget and what COVID nineteen pandemic's going to, what impact that's going to have on us as a town, and their fear of how we're going to provide services to the citizens if we do have some large deficits in our revenues, and they're nervous about, you know, us providing, you know, a million dollars out there, and if nine months from now, you know, will we come back to them and ask them to, you know, raise taxes or raise rates and such? So I'm not against assisting businesses or citizens. I'm not overly against this. I'm just concerned that we, I don't want us to move quickly on this. I'd like for us to see what else is going to be available first before we move forward.
Laurie, I would, along those same lines, like, all of the arguments that were made against this, because I had a couple, too, were the same arguments that were made against Dominion Power Line. I mean, not power line, there were redundant water line. Like, are my water rates going to go up? Are you going to increase my taxes because of this huge project and so forth and so on? So I heard those, too.
Well, it's good to know.
My response to that is very clear. That's why we've been doing contingency planning and moving dollars forward to make sure that we can cover as much shortfalls in next year's budget as possible. My second reaction is that you've already had one restaurant completely shut down and gone out of business already, that I've read about. If we don't help in some kind of recovery, our downtown is going to be a ghost town, if it isn't already. Most of the businesses I've talked to like this plan of disseminating by grocery seats. The other thing that, Matt, I've got some editorial thing. What if, is there any stipulation in here, some businesses are owned by, say that they own two to three businesses in town? Is there any stipulation in how many grants you could get?
No, sir, just based upon their business license. So if they have, if they have three businesses and they have three business licenses, and they qualify under the various terms, they would receive three grants, based upon how it's currently written.
Okay. The second thing that I had for editorial, one of the things we've talked about is cap limits. I didn't see a cap limit in here of a million dollars when I read through it.
I thought I put that in.
Well, it's greater than a certain gross.
I might have missed it. Yeah, right here, for the program?
Yeah.
For up to one million dollars for a royal business license or economy, economic recovery. And the cap.
Okay, I was looking specifically for the word cap.
Right. Yeah, those are the kind of things we can fine-tune should the council wish to move forward.
Matt, this is Jake. You guys did a tremendous job on this. I know I talked about it and tried to poorly articulate something to this fashion last time, and I think that the tiered approach, whether it's the cap limits and identifying the appropriate businesses, I think you guys did a stellar job for putting together this draft document for us tonight. So thank you very much, because I can't imagine that that was easy, and I can't imagine that that was a lot of work, so I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Couple of quick questions and thoughts. Number one, I was really pushing for something like this because I think that the town should have a response to be able to help businesses. And I feel like my first, kind of the first direction I was going for was some sort of utility breaks or tax breaks, and I think that this is a compromise in those directions to be able to allow us to do it. Whether council votes on, you know, whether council votes on moving forward something like this tonight or a month from now, or sixty, ninety days, or doesn't even do it, I think it's important that we have a response and that the town sees that we're trying to figure out a way to give assistance, and whether council gets consensus on that or not, it's another story. So I say that because I want you to know that if council is being divided and it doesn't ever go anywhere, I think it was very important that we demonstrated that we had the ability and we looked at something for this town. So again, thank you for that. I like this. I think that, I think that Laurie and Latasha bring up really good points about when to do it, and I think that I struggle with that as well. I think that what I struggle with is these businesses in the executive order have now been closed over a month. And a lot of these businesses, as we're starting to talk, let's just focus on our Main Street area. A lot of these businesses go week to week in revenue and, you know, paying salaries and expenses. Now, I know that a lot of them have, unfortunately, have had to lay off their employees and maybe are paying curfew to go, or maybe not even operating their businesses. But there's still debt service to be had for these businesses, and I think that my intention all along has been, let's make sure that these businesses are still here when the executive order is lifted. Let's make sure that they have a foot on the ground so that they can ramp up, and not that when the executive order is lifted, they don't have any more operating cash. They're paying their debt service and they're done, and that's what I'm afraid of. And now, I think that could be inevitable with some of the businesses, as Bill mentioned, but not all. And I think that that's where I was really, you know, hoping that we'd be able to provide that assistance. So I don't know what the right answer is, but I do know that they've already missed a month with the executive order in place, and it doesn't look like in the next few weeks that's going to change. And they could be going into a couple of months. So I struggle with, if we don't do something today, when do we do it? And if it takes thirty days, based on your two-week forecast for grant submission, two-week forecast for committing and dispersment of funds, if it's going to take thirty days to get something, and we're already a month into this, it's going to be five weeks, by the time that somebody's going to get any kind of assistance, we're going to be out over two months. So when do we pull the trigger on doing something to help support our local businesses that way? And that's what I struggle with. That's kind of the question I want to pose to council, because this is not my area of expertise, and I don't have all the answers for this. I just feel like there's something to be done sooner rather than later.
I agree with everything that you said, and I think we should do it sooner. Just because, like you said, we don't know how much longer this is going to last, and a lot of the businesses have been able to change their models around and still get some form of income, but definitely not at the level they were previously.
Well, look at the major point there. Additional assistance for having town utility account or town real estate taxes. Instead of them taking the money and throwing it out to a mortgage in Ohio State, majority of these funds take care of these funds that we could have a shortfall on.
To help mitigate our bad debt, is what you're saying.
You're exactly right. We would gain back on the utilities, but we're still helping the business by not holding them hostage on utilities.
Yes.
But the funds come back to the coffers where they should be to carry out some of this shortfall or losses, but it's still being those utility funds. So that's the big picture. But still, on the other hand, you got the other half of this chart that shows we're trying to do something to help keep the businesses in our community. To answer your question, Jake, I don't know what the magic date is. If it is June twelve, as the governor's saying, I hope that some of these restaurants that are planning to reopen or have not been under the guise of drop in delivery or pickup will have a plan going forward how they're going to open on that date, especially the restriction on social distancing. So I don't have a magic date, but I know that five weeks afterwards is not going to help an individual business. So we'd like to have these guidelines in place now so that businesses could apply. And yes, they've done everything according to stipulations, and whatever magic date that we would decide, we could turn the wheels running at that time rather than waiting five to six weeks. That's my thoughts on that. It really comes down to the fact, do you like this approach? Now, if you like this approach, you don't have to implement until, say, June twelve, but you could already have the wheels turning.
Right, Bill, but if we implement on, if we implement on June twelfth, we're more than ninety days past before they ever get anything. So it's ninety days that they've been either having zero operations or very little.
Right. That's why I'd like to implement this process in advance so that they can already be applied and say, okay, if the town, whatever date we put on it, agrees to this, I am now in the program. So that gives them some assurance.
Mr. Seelock, this is Matt. If I could suggest, I would strongly encourage, if I understood you properly, I would strongly encourage putting together the entire process and having individuals apply and decide not to fund. I believe the first decision is council needs to give staff and I direction. Do you want to do this program? No, do you want to offer an economic relief through a nonprofit? That's decision, in my opinion, that's decision one. Decision two is up to how much, and then decision three would be the general process and structure that we've outlined, and the timing of it. So really, do you want to do this? And I think that needs to be a consensus from council at a work session. Do you want to, do you want, do you want to do this? And if so, pick a date, and staff and I will work backwards from that date.
I agree. I think that some of the discussions we've had and some of this workforce that may be kind of idle right now could be implemented into this program and administer, help administer it to the nonprofit groups.
What I, here's what I propose. I like the idea. I think that staff should move forward and starting to, you know, figure out the timelines and implement it. My opinion of it would be, if council wanted to do it, wanted to move forward on it, that we, it's going to still take a week or two to finalize the plan, get it out there, advertise it. You're probably still looking at it about another week, week and a half after that, which means that the first applications and the process would start maybe three weeks from now, which means that the first dispersments would be thirty, forty-five, almost sixty days, forty-five, about forty-five to sixty, forty-five days from now at least before a business ever got money. And if council was, if council is having a little bit of heartburn on this because of, let's say, the million-dollar cap on it, Matt, is it, is it fine if council said, okay, a million dollars seems like a lot. Let's see how this program goes. Let's offer five hundred thousand and know that we can come back and say we need to raise that cap to a million? Is that a possibility?
Yes, sir, and let me, it is a possibility. And let me throw other one, one critical element, and maybe what I should have included is a timeline in this document, so apologize. But this also requires a public hearing.
So we have to. One or two?
One. Mr. Napier's done a lot of research on this recently.
Okay, so that's, so we're three weeks out?
That puts us at least two to three weeks out from, yes, we have to advertise.
So three weeks out, plus getting it out there in the public's another week, so that's a month out. Plus, from then, your timeline for first dispersment is sixty days. So it's still two months. If we said go today, you're still two months before the first check goes out, assuming council votes it forward.
Well, theoretically, y- yes, that, but we could also, if, if the intent of council is to move forward with this, we would, we would ramp up immediately and start getting the necessary applications, the, the, uh, the portal, the, the, you know, the whole process figured out with nonprofit, et cetera, et cetera, during the advertisement period, so that once the, once you vote, I mean, we could, we could hit the ground very quickly. Yeah. So, I wouldn't waste time. In other words, if, if, if I had the sense from council tonight, that council does want to move forward on this sooner rather than later, then I would, I would do my job and start putting this all together. I mean, so just, I, whatever you guys decide to do.
Matt, I talked to the county today, and they said they are not in favor of doing any of this at this point. But they are in favor of looking at it at, at a future date, but not to implement it until after all the avenues of the feds and the states have come through, and then they would consider, uh, some type of stimulus if, if it comes to that point. But they're not even close to being ready to even implement anything at this point.
What small businesses are in the county?
Well, you got all the businesses out on the corridor and Linden and other places.
All businesses out there. Counties, yeah, all businesses are in the county.
Just want to let you guys know that I did talk to the, uh, chairman of the, of the board supervisor, and then that's her so-called plan at this time, not to do anything at this point, and wait and see how the feds work towards the goals. And then, uh, if there is a possibility of necessity, then they would reconsider.
So, should we?
I'm not in favor of waiting for the county to move forward on anything. I, we have a responsibility to these people who have, have maintained our general fund over the years. And if we have a little bit of reserve right now that we can pay back and assist them during this period of time, we ought to be doing that. We're talking about small business in this town, a small town of fifteen thousand people. And if you don't have that movie house and bowling alley and a hairdresser and barber shop, we've already gone through two months without a haircut, and I know the ladies on board here are probably saying, boy, I wish they had my beautician right now. But that's what I'm concerned about. We have to maintain what we got and hope that these businesses are going to come back up. And I don't see why we can't go ahead and implement and try to push this thing forward and then pull the trigger. That's my thought.
Well, one, 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 one point of consideration, uh, Mr. Seelak, is, um, take a business that's grossing less than fifty thousand dollars a year, is a thousand dollars, five hundred of it towards utilities and five hundred of it towards assistance. Is that going to really keep that business open and keep that business running during this, in the event of the impacts of this COVID-nineteen? Same goes for a fifty to two hundred thousand. You know, is this three thousand dollars going to really have an impact? I, I don't, I can't really answer that. Uh, I was hoping to do a survey, um, to try to get a sense. Uh, frankly, I haven't, I haven't gotten many phone calls. Um, I've got a couple of phone calls, um, against the program, and, and, but they weren't, they understood where we were coming from, but I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of aspects to consider if you decide to move forward.
Matt, this is, uh, this is Gary. I've, I've, I've been having some heartburn over this the more I think about it myself. Um, I, 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 I want to help uh, one hundred percent wholeheartedly. Um, I understand the, the hardships that people are going through. But, um, I've, I've, again, you know, I, I've been tossing about this, and, and I, I really, at the amount that I, that I see, I don't know if that's even going to help, Matt. Um, I know, I want to thank you guys for putting this together. Um, i- i- it's great. Um, am I prepared to say no all the way on it right now? No, I don't think I am. Um, but I, I, I guess I would like to kind of pump the brakes on this a little bit and, um, and, and, and just, um, give it, give it some more think-through before we pull the trigger. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. So, based upon my, trying to gauge the sense of council, um, Mr. Holloway, do you have a, do you have a preference one way or the other at this time?
I think he said yes.
He might be on mute.
His mic is muted.
That's fine.
Would you like me to unmute him?
No, that's fine. That's fine.
Yeah, I'll, um, I'll text him till his mic's, mic's mute. Um, but Matt, the dollar amounts could also be changed, right? The cap is still the same.
Yes, sir. Uh, uh, well, the cap can be whatever you'd like the cap to be, the dollar, the, the, you know, whatever you guys wish.
Well, this is our first night to absorb this. So,
Correct.
We're going to meet next week, Monday. So, that gives you time. We're pumping the brakes, as Councilman Gillespie said, and, uh, Thompson. But by the same token, it gives us more time to absorb, and we can change the cap, we can change the dollar amounts, we can put the stipulation in, uh, of five hundred thousand. You know, you could do in numerous things. I mean, I like this proposal as it is. And so, that's why I'm, I'm kind of championing this thing right now because it really makes sense to me.
Um, if we're not going to do anything today, um, can we do a public input? Um, well, I guess we're no, next, next one time's a work session, isn't it? Never mind. I thought next week was going to be a public hearing.
You can always, you could always advertise, I mean, the, the framework of the program doesn't have to be part of the public hearing, just the fact of appropriating the funds to the nonprofit would be part of the public hearing. So, you, you know, you could theoretically move forward to the public hearing, and, you know, staff and I can start working on the parameters of the program, and you can receive public input, and at that point, before we formalize it, the public, based upon public input, you choose not to do it, or you choose to move forward.
So, Mr. Tidrick and, and fellow council members, I ju- I just want to say that I agree that the system that looks set up here, um, you know, I'm, I'm thoroughly impressed with, um, what, uh, Mr. Tidrick and Mr. Wilson came up with. Um, I shared with Mr. Tidrick a kind of a funny that one citizen, uh, you know, kind of had it in their mind that we were going to stand down on Main Street and be handing out hundred-dollar bills, um, which was never our intent. So, I think that the way this is written up is definitely very well thought out. Um, it's methodical. Um, I, one thought, as Mr. Tidrick shared, which I had thought originally when I saw the thousand dollars is, is that if you were a small business, you know, you don't want to look a gift worse than the mouth because any money that would be given to you would be, you know, I'm sure you would be very grateful. I'm just not sure a thousand dollars is going to pull anybody out of the last month of, of, of a lack of receipts. Um, however, I'm sure they would be grateful for any assistance. Uh, I'm encouraged by somebody saying that we could cap them out differently, or we could see how many people actually are interested in this type of relief. And it may be that more are, it may be that less are. Um, I like the idea of some public input because the public input I have gotten has not been supportive of all, at all, but I realize that there are probably plenty of people out there that aren't aware of, um, what we're discussing. And so, maybe the more we, the more we put it out in the public, um, with the press sharing it, that maybe we will get more input. Um, I'm just going with the citizen input that I, I, um, had, which was to, you know, slow down, as Mr. Gillespie said, pump the brakes a little bit, and see what, um, what is going to be provided elsewise. As Mr. Seelak said, I don't necessarily trust that anybody above us is going to do anything, but I do think we owe it to our citizens to look to see what other types of relief they could possibly get.
Thank you.
What do y'all want to do? You want to put it up, vote to on it, in, in the paper for, uh, public hearing or not?
Please.
I'm comfortable moving forward that way. As Matt said, I mean, we can change, we can advertise the program. Um, we can choose to vote on it based on how it's written here, or, uh, continue to divvy it up differently with lower caps, or more money with still lower caps. Um, but I think that would, that would also draw out public, uh, public input as well. And listen, I'm not, and I, I, let me just be really clear too, so everybody knows my stance. I am not opposed, if public input comes out to be, like, you know, we're overwhelming against it and says, we don't want this. Well, well, shoot. I mean, we came up with a program to help our local businesses, and overwhelming, uh, if, if public support was overwhelmingly against it, and we voted against it because of that, well, hey, I'm comfortable saying we tried everything we could, and public opinion was completely against it.
Uh, I, I agree with that, uh, Jake. I mean, I have no problem, uh, advertising it for a public hearing. And, um, and, and, and seeing how, how, um, you know, how it turns out, so.
All right, Latasha?
Okay, with the public hearing and everything.
Okay. Chris?
Chris thought our meeting ended at nine. I believe he did.
Oh, man. Uh, let's see, who else hasn't spoken yet? I guess, I guess that's everybody that's spoken. Bill?
Uh, Bill, Bill and Lori.
I'd say we move forward to public hearing, and between that and that night and the, uh, responses we get as councilmen, we'll have a good feeling about whether this is a good program or not.
Lori?
Um, you know, I, yeah, I, 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 as I said before, I just want the public's, you know, input on this. Um, and so, kind of like what Jake said, if there's overwhelming support for it, then by all means, I will support it. If there's overwhelming, um, support against it, or no support, then I would be inclined to say, let's hold up and wait. I mean, it's not like if we don't do it right now that we couldn't in the future. Um, you know, as long, as long as we have no intention of spending this money somewhere else, we would still have it available to us if we decided to move forward with it.
Okay, Matt, looks like you got your orders.
Uh, Mr. Seelak, just to clarify one other point. Um, do you want to try to have this at the next regular meeting for the public hearing, or do you want a special meeting before that?
Well, I think.
I'm thinking the next regular meeting would be Monday night.
I think it needs to be held on a regular agenda meeting, not at a work session.
No, I, no, it's because of the public hearing. It has to be at a regular meeting.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
The next, the next regular meeting is in two weeks.
I don't think you can get it advertised in that length of time.
Be tight.
Because it's a budget amendment, we only have to, um, advertise it one time, and we only need one, one reading. Uh, so, I, correct me if I'm wrong, BJ, but I think we could advertise it by then.
I think we can. It's just a matter of what, I don't know the, uh, the schedule for the papers. Uh, Tina's still on, she may be able to chime in.
Anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll try to get it.
We have to try. Forward as quickly as you can. I mean, that's, that's the best you can do.
Yeah, just check it out, Matt and, uh, BJ, and just let me know, uh, Thursday, what you find out.
Yes, sir. Sounds great.
Any other discussion on any item tonight?
Uh, I hate to do it, but we also develop, uh, program for the unemployed individual. Are you interested in hearing that tonight, or another meeting?
Well, Matt, I, what you all said earlier about six hundred dollars and all that, it looks like that might be a mute issue.
I, I, I'm just.
My opinion of that, Matt, is we hold off on this because we already know they're getting six hundred dollars a week from the federal government. And, you know, we could review later and do it at a later date if we see it necessary.
Okay, you're right.
I'll focus on the business. I'll focus on business.
Any other discussion?
That's all I have. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Anything else?
The other, um, the only a- opinion item that I have to discuss is how you want to handle FY twenty-one fiscal year budget. And, uh, that's got to be moved forward as well for a, uh, public hearing. And whether you want to advertise it as we presented it, which means you can always lower the, uh, the amount of the, uh, the expenditures and revenues. We can make the appropriate adjustments. Or do you want to advertise it based upon, um, modified, the modified, uh, presentation that we've, we've given you in the past. So, that decision does not need to be made tonight. Right? It can be made at a later date, but I want you to be thinking about how you want to advertise the proposed budget because we're getting close to that time period.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
We could talk about that, see you later too, uh, maybe on Thursday. Is there anything else to discuss? All right.
That's all I have.